All right, good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting, March 28th for the City of Aurora. I'll ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance which is behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you.
Ms. Barner?
Mr. President.
Ms. Grandillo?
Here.
Mr. Hattrich?
Here.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes, or here.
Mr. Kovac?
President.
Mr. Cudley?
Here.
Ms. McDougall?
President.
Mr. Vaca?
President.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
All right, the meeting, we have everyone. Next on our agenda is reconsideration of past minutes. Is there any of your past, past actions, anyone want to add to that? Moving on to consideration of the minutes for March 14th, 2016. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, a first, we have a motion second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Abstain.
Mr. Hattrich?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes. All right, we have a new police officer with us to be sworn in. Officer Scott, will you please come forward?
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Andrew Scott?
I, Andrew Scott.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Aurora.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Aurora.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As police, police officer for the City of Aurora Police Department.
As police officer of the City of Aurora Police Department.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations.
Just introduced in Andrew a little bit the members of council and the audience, this is Father Lynn Scott, who's also a fireman with us and a part-time policeman. Andrew graduated from Tiffin University in 2015, just recently graduated from the Police Academy. He currently works for the city too, in the Parks and Market Department, so it's Jim's loss and our gain, so welcome aboard Andrew, and his father's going to put his bed in. Thank you.
It's about time where dad gets even. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Just thanks for the support from everyone, thanks to the city, I enjoy working for the city and I enjoy looking forward to a future of working for the city.
Great. Welcome aboard. All right, we have no public hearing. Mayor's, Mayor's report. Mary.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good evening, members of council and the viewing audience. First, I want to say thank you very much to the voters in Aurora for supporting our important road and bridge levy renewal with 71 percent of the vote. This levy will generate about $500,000 per year, which is critical to our road program. Applications are being accepted now for the 2016 Sidewalk Transitional Assistance Repair Program, for which the city appropriated $50,000 in this year's budget. Criteria about the program and applications are available on the website, at City Hall, or by calling 562-6131. The application deadline is May 1. And the criteria really apply to the condition of the sidewalk. There are no income or related criteria for participating in this program. We are already planning ahead for next Christmas, taking advantage of spring sales on holiday decorations. And I just wanted to let you know that since we spent $10,000 less than what was budgeted for the Parks truck, we'll be using $3250 of those funds to purchase new sorely needed Christmas garland to use this coming year. We get it on discount. In addition, the money currently budgeted for holiday decorations, which you saw in the budget, is being used to accommodate lighted wreaths on utility poles this next year. It's sort of the next step, and we can't do it everywhere, but we are pursuing that with the electric company. Since our last meeting, I attended the Chamber Networking Luncheon at the Aurora Inn, the Mayor's Association of Portage, Stark, and Summit Meeting, of which I am now the Secretary, and the Greater Akron Chamber Annual Meeting. I also met with a potential developer for the Beljon property, packed lunches for the Portage County Center of Hope at Howard Hanna, and participated in the countywide tornado drill on March 23rd. Earlier this afternoon, I taped my mayor's report at Cable 9. And there are two other things not on the report I wanted to mention. First, two local restaurants have applied for, on a special liquor application, to have their hours extended in the evening specifically during the Republican Convention in Cleveland. We don't actually handle those other than to then forward the applications to the State of Ohio. But both the Bertram and the Aurora Inn have made those applications for your information. And last, we extend deep sympathy to Officer Vicki Yandriga, whose father passed away last week. There are calling hours, I think, and a service in Connyot, and if you would like that information, please call my office. Thank you.
All right, any questions for the mayor? Ms. McDougall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the mayor, can you just give us an update? I've seen the progress on Shawnee, but if you could just maybe update us on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. President, Ms. McDougal, the water line is proceeding. I think they're out of the paper street and probably will be crossing New Hudson if they haven't already. But I've been stopping out there with some frequency, so they, they know I'm watching them, because I think it's important for them to understand that this is a neighborhood project and they're going through people's yards. But so far, I think it's been, it's been going fairly well, and with the good weather, they've really been able to move on it. We are in the process of evaluating the bids on the Harmon Water Line, and we'll probably, probably be presenting that to you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor. You have a copy of the Law Director's Report to you that he has submitted for tonight's meeting. Are there any questions for the Law Director? All right, seeing none. You have a copy of the Council President's Report in front of you. Council has asked to please support a motion to add the following ordinances to tonight's agenda. 2016-036, which is the reverse 911 service agreement. 2016-037, which is the tax abatements. 2016-038, which is the employees generally. This proposed legislation was discussed earlier tonight at the Committee of the Home Meeting. So if there's a motion.
So moved.
We have a move and second to add those to the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. All right, citizens' comments, anyone who would like to comment on anything on tonight's agenda, please step forward. Mr. Mazaro?
Mr. Horvath, members of council, my name is George Mazaro, 186 Eldridge. Going to 030, employees generally establishing the position of secretary, I appreciate what's being done there. If you look at the total record, a lot of it has to be corrected, and I think Ms. Aldridge is doing an excellent job of trying to get things straightened around after the mess she walked into when she was hired. And I hope someday this council will realize how many errors were made back when the former Mayor McGill was here, and the employees, and the layoffs, introduction to size and all that. And I think this is just the beginning of getting you back on the track, what is supposed to be the rules and regulations of the laws governing employees within the city. On 034 and 035, I watched that, and you don't see that in front of you, but a lot of variances have been granted to these developers. And I've asked at some of the meetings way back when, because these are many, many years old, I've asked why the developer cannot tell the possible purchase of the property, the variance that were granted, because variances up to 79 feet were granted on some of these properties, the wetlands. And the point is, you don't see that as part of your report, you should. And you know, I'll tell you one thing, if I was to purchase a property over there, and I found this afterwards, there'd be a lawsuit filed, because the, the developer is there to make money, build the property, and they do a good job of that. However, the variances that had been granted, the purchaser should be notified of it before they purchased the property. And without that, you've lost something, guaranteeing them, as you well know, we're known for flooding in this area, and the wetlands are only there to protect it from less flooding than there are some of the areas. But I would suggest very strongly, somehow, and maybe your law director can advise you, that you add to this that the developer notify the purchaser of the variance that were granted by the City of Aurora in reference to these properties. The next one is on the tax abatement. I did talk with your finance director, the meeting they had on the 24th needs to have a meeting notice, and that was not given out. And the fact is, you have to, by law, require to have the meeting, and by law, you got to have me a copy of the meeting notice. The law requires that. I didn't say that, the law requires that, and it didn't happen. But he has corrected it already, and he's making sure that it'll be taken care of. But I've sent a notice out many, many years ago, and it's part of the file, that I want to be notified of any meeting, any meeting. And this is one of them. So I would suggest when you have your meeting, before you approve any of this stuff, you turn around and make sure you redo that meeting, so you know what you approved. This is the second time a meeting has been held in this community here in the last few months without proper notice. You remember the day I walked in, there were people who were having a meeting here, closed doors? And that's illegal. And employees generally. Last but not least, I don't know why, is this going to be a contracted employee? Is this going to be a regular part-time employee? And if it's a regular part-time employee, you already have a part-time employee. Are you, I know you're going July, you're supposed to put him on full-time, go back to putting what the required on that, but I don't understand, we're hiring another part-time employee, when we already have a part-time employee that's going to full-time come July. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mazaro, I'll have, I'll, I'll have the mayor comment on 38 when that time comes.
Okay.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to bring anything forward for tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to tonight's agenda, we'll go on to tonight's agenda. Councilman remarks? Anyone? All right, we'll move on to legislation.
Mr. Horvath?
Sorry.
If I, I pressed it after you said that. If I can just kind of enlighten council a little bit on 035, has nothing to do with this purchase, but it kind of a, going back to, this is your history lesson for this evening, because we're talking about wetlands. And recently doing some research, one of the original investors into Aurora was manned by the last name King. He bought part of Aurora, and he never came out here, never saw the land, stayed in West Suffield. All he wanted to do was resell the land and make money off of it. He had his land agent do that for him, and that was in 1811. In 1839, the Riley family that lived out on 82 to the west of us filed a claim against Fidelio King, claiming that 11 acres that they purchased was underwater, and they wanted to be compensated for their loss of property. So the, the problem with the western part of the Aurora being wet goes way back, so just wanted to share that with everybody.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, I know I've said this at a previous meeting, but since we're actually going to vote on it tonight, 2016-018, I will have to abstain from voting on that. It's not that I don't support the Police Department, and this is very important. Am I looking at the right one?
Yep.
Yes. It's a very important ordinance, but I have a potential conflict.
Okay, thank you. Duly noted. All right, we'll move on to legislation for tonight. Ordinance 2016-017 is from the Committee of the Home and is on third reading. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 153, Division of Parks and Recreation of Aurora's codified ordinances, and this is on third reading.
Move to adopt.
Second. We have a move and second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Well, you did it second, Ms. Barner did it, I'm sorry. Ms. Barner?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Oh my gosh, you're sorry. Mr. Hattrich?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-017 is adopted. Ordinance 2016-018 is from the Committee of the Home and is on third reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a 2016 service agreement with B and C Communications in the amount of $11,598 to properly maintain the equipment used by the police, fire, service, and water departments, taking necessary funds from the general fund number one, the water fund number 70, and the sewer fund number 71, and declaring emergency to provide uninterrupted service to emergency communications, and this is on third reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a move and second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Abstain.
Mr. Hattrich?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougall?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-018 is adopted. Ordinance 2016-022 is from the Committee of the Home and is on second reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with American Fireworks in the amount of $17,500 to perform the city's July 4th fireworks program, taking necessary funds from the recreation fund number 78, and this will go on the third reading. Ordinance 2016-023 is from the Committee of the Home and is on second reading. It's an ordinance accepting the quotation of and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Baker Vehicle Systems in the amount of $10,432.88 through the state cooperative purchasing program for the purchase of a Hustler Super Z zero-turn mower, taking necessary funds from the capital improvement fund number 60, and declaring emergency in order to get the equipment in time for peak mowing season. The administration has asked for suspension.
Second.
We have a move and second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries.
Move to adopt.
Second. We have a move and second to adopt. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrich?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Ordinance 2016-025, Mr. Wolf, do you, on, roll call on number?
24.
024, 3.
I apologize.
All right. Ordinance 2016-023 is adopted. Ordinance 2016-025 is from the Committee of the Home and is on second reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Hall Public Safety Company in the amount of $21,183.81 to install new and used equipment in the new police vehicles, taking necessary funds from the capital improvement fund number 60, and declaring emergency in order to properly equip new police vehicles. The administration has asked for suspensions.
So moved.
Second.
We have a move and second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a move and second. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrich?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrich?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougall?
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-025 is adopted. Ordinance 2016-022 is from the Committee of the Home and is on second reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with American Fireworks in the amount of $17,500 to perform the city's July 4th fireworks program, taking necessary funds from the recreation fund number 78, and this will go on the third reading. Ordinance 2016-023 is from the Committee of the Home and is on first reading. It's an ordinance amending Section 161.10B, Employees Generally Establishing Positions Secretaries of Aurora's Codified Ordinances, to remove references to multiple committees that no longer exist, and to remove outdated information and clarify the city's current practice. And this will go on the second reading. Ordinance 2016-031 is from the Committee of the Home and is on first reading. It's an ordinance amending Section 951.01, Aurora Cemetery Charges and Fees of Aurora's Codified Ordinances, by limiting subsection O, which references the Finance Committee, and this will go on the second reading. Ordinance 2016-032 is from the Committee of the Home and is on first reading. It's a resolution confirming the mayor's reappointment of Mr. Ken Wolf to the position of member of Portage Area Regional Transportation Authority, PARDA, Board of Trustees for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2019, and this will go on the second reading. Ordinance 2016-033 is from the Committee of the Home and is on first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2016 Ford F-350 truck with plow from Liberty Ford for use by the Division of Parks and Recreation at a cost of $31,846.3, less the trade-in allowance of $6,000 for one 2006 Ford F-350 truck currently owned by the city for a net cost of $25,846.3, which is less than the amount on the state bid list, taking the necessary funds from the capital improvement fund number 60, and declaring emergency in order to receive the truck by summer season. This will go on the second reading. Ordinance 2016-034 is from Planning Commission and is on first reading. It's an ordinance approving the final plat for Hawkins subdivision located on the north side of Mennonite Road across from Harris Drive in an R4 residential zoning district, and declaring emergency in order to allow the project to begin during construction season, and this will go on the second reading. Ordinance 2016-035 is on first reading. It's an ordinance approving the final, final plat for Forest Ridge Phase 1, located on the south side of West Garfield Road adjacent to the Aurora Wetlands in an R2 residential zoning district, and declaring emergency in order to allow the project to begin during the construction season, and this will go on the second reading. Ordinance 2016-036 is from the Committee of the Home. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor and, and the mayor to enter into a five-year service agreement substantial in form attached here too with Airbus DS Communications Incorporated for the city's reverse 911 system in the amount of $36,850, payable in annual installments of $8,270 for years 1 and 2 of the agreement, and 67, 7, $6,770 for years 3 and, 3, 4, and 5 of the agreement, taking the necessary funds from the general fund number 1, and declaring emergency, and this will go on the second reading. Resolution 2016-037 is from the Committee of the Home and is on first reading. It's a resolution accepting the attached written recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council, TIRC, and declaring emergency, as the report must be filed with the State of Ohio by March 31st, 2016, and the administration has asked for a suspension.
So moved.
Second.
We have a move and second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion's carried.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a move and second to adopt. Mr., Ms. DePiero, if you want to come in?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the issue was raised with regard to the meeting notice, and I think the, the finance directors indicated, has talked to the gentleman with regard to the notice issue. I would refer you to revise code section 570985. This is not a typical city committee in that the, the county auditor or the designee serves as the chairperson of the council, and the council, this particular council meets at the call of the chairperson. So I think that in the future, we will endeavor to do a better job of notifying the same way of a, of a regular city council meeting, or a planning committee meeting, or a planning commission meeting, or another city meeting. However, it's not the city that calls this particular meeting, it's actually called by the county. But the gentleman brings up a good point, and I think we'll, we will, we will work to get better notice to him in the future.
Thank you. I have a question. When do we need to appoint someone to the, the committee?
I think we're talking about a different committee, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Mr. President? I think you referred to Treasury.
The Treasury Committee.
I think it, probably, I would say before that Treasury Committee would meet, probably in the next 30 days, I would say.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public? Mr. Mazaro?
Mr. Horvath, members of council, my name is George Mazaro, 186 Eldridge. I would suggest you take the time to redo Hire Vice Code. Any governmental committee has to be public notice. If you want me to challenge that, I will. The fact is that all I'm asking for is be properly notified according to the rules, regulations, and laws.
And we will do that. Thank you. All right, we have a move and second to adopt 2016-037. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrich?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-037 is adopted. Ordinance 2016-038 is from the Committee of the Home and is on first reading. It's an ordinance amending Exhibit 1 to Aurora Code of Ordinances, Chapter 161, Employees Generally, to reflect changes in the compensation for the individuals listed on the attached schedule, and/or to place those newly hired individuals listed on the attached schedule on Exhibit A at the compensation specified for them, approving such compensation and declaring emergency, and the administration has asked for a suspension. We have a move and second to adopt. Any comments from the public? Mr. Mazaro?
Member of the Council, my name is Jordan Mazaro, 186 Eldredge. Again, I'm asking, is this going to be a contracted employee? Is this going to be a regular part-time employee? We already have a part-time employee. And how do you hire another part-time employee when you have a part-time employee? The question is, what rule and regulation are we working on this time?
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a part-time employee, and to some extent, it was necessitated because one of our inspectors has become building inspector, I think, for the county and is not as available as he was. We have a series of inspectors who have different licenses, and what, what the department is trying to do is to have enough part-time folks lined up who have the appropriate licenses. Not all of them have the same licenses. So that's what we are doing. We still need the full-time employee come July, which was in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vaca?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to extend also the two previous legislations, pieces of legislation we just moved to second reading. If you add up the totals of the two projects, there's 115 homes going in in that place in particular.
Mr. Vaca, we're on 38.
38, yeah. You're talking about the inspector.
Yes.
Yeah. That's why you need this inspector. You need, because the city is growing leaps and bounds. They're building on Treat Road, they're building in Hawthorne. We need these inspectors, and it's, if you come to think of, if you hire another full-timer, it's going to cost us benefits, but the part-timers, you need them, because we're running out of inspectors to do this work. And that's, that's why I'm approving this.
Thank you. All right, we have a move and second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Varner?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hattrich?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-038 is adopted. Citizens' comments, anyone who would like to comment on anything in general, please raise your hand, step forward. Mr. Vaca, Mr. Mazaro?
Member of the Council, my name is Jordan Mazaro, 186 Eldredge. I assume our hivers are going to be painted here shortly in the very near future. The weather's getting better, even though it rained today with an ice day yesterday. Does anybody know how many times each of our ball diamonds are used on an annual basis? It'd be interesting, because why are we building more diamond? Because we have diamonds that don't get used very often. And if they do, you know, I like to have somebody keep a record how many times they're used. And the ad hoc, Mr. Wolf, Chairman of, they had never approved a final plan. All they had done is said, we'll give you the concept, and then we lit the recreation director. Let me suggest to members of the council and the administration that you read your rules and regulations and your charter. It's very clear who's in charge of the properties and who can say what, when, how, and where. At the last meeting, the mayor said they've been working on cable. And the fact is, for last year, I've been calling, calling, calling the council's office. And now, believe it or not, we've gone from channel 17 to 16, believe it or not. And we got two months, two earlier council meetings being showed. So that's really a problem that we're running into. It troubles me that we're paying them in excess of $65,000 in fees to people who have TWC. Okay, and why we can't get a better response than they're working on it. Maybe it'd be best if we turn around and buy our own station and do what we want to do. It wouldn't cost you as much as it's costing us right now. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Kraus, how many, how many fields do we have and how much play gets on each field? You better know that one.
Well, it depends on what the answer you're looking for, Mr. President. But yeah, we have, we currently have 14 baseball fields between the city and the school that are shared. Your utilization during the week is about 95%, and your weekend is a little lower than that. But, you know, during your season, they're used a significant portion of the time. Sunday is the least amount, but... Yeah, part of the discussion at the committee level on the baseball fields and the need, if you will, wasn't specifically that we needed to add additional fields, but it was a relationship in looking at the current existing fields and which fields might potentially be removed or eliminated in the future. So adding four additional fields at the Hartman property isn't because of a need to add four additional fields exclusively by itself.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to council. Ms. McDougall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we have a great planning commission, and I have the highest respect for Mrs. Grandillo. I'm just wondering, can you give us a little more insight on the the wetland project? How that is being talked about as far as the water flow and and any concerns that maybe were addressed on that?
I guess it would be more, more towards Mr. DePiero. Is that okay, Madam Chair?
Yeah, that's fine, I was just going to say something.
Mr. President, Mr. President, Councilman McDougal, with regard to the project on Forest Ridge, which is known as Forest Ridge, first of all, I think you have to start from the, start from the premise that this was a court-ordered development that was ordered back in, I want to say at least a dozen years ago, that a development take place, and I think, we do have a copy of the consent entry that I can, I can give to you. It predated me, so I wasn't involved, and predated many of us here. So I think we have to start with that premise. I will tell you that I've been involved, because as you know, I staffed the planning commission as the law director, the city's law director, and the Board of Zoning Appeals as well. I attend all those meetings. And I will tell you that there has been a lot of scrutiny on this entire process from the city's side. And we have been, I don't want to say hard on the developer, but we've been hard on the developer. And his representative is in the audience tonight, and I think he would attest to that, that we've, we've worked really hard to make sure that, number one, the consent entry has been followed by the city so as not to, not to subject the city to further litigation and further legal fees, et cetera. But also to make sure that our ordinances have been complied with. The second thing that Ms. Januska, to her credit, did was bring in Chagrin Valley Watershed Partners to act as the city's consultant when projects like this come forward. And they did their own report, and I think did a very good job of advising the planning commission, because they deal with these on a regular basis of, on the variances. And then working with the developer to try to scale back those variances. So yes, there were repairian variances that were granted. However, our consultant, the Chagrin Valley Watershed Partners, worked very closely with us, advising us, and, and, and I think negotiating, if you will, helping us negotiate to scale back those variances. So there are variances there, but I think we had a very good consultant that helped us, helped us through that. So I would just tell you that there is a lot of green space as part of this development, especially in the rear of the property. You know, we can say we should never let that be developed. We should never let that be developed, but you know, that really wasn't our call. That decision was made in a court down the road from here in Portage County, and that decision was made many years ago. So I think we did our very best. And I think at the end of the day, the product will be, I think, as good as we can, we can, we can, we've made it because of the, I think, the hard work that was going into it. So I hope that answers your question and give you a little more color as to how the process came forward.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify with respect to the ad hoc recreation committee in the Hartman Athletic Complex. The committee did, in fact, vote to forward that plan to the administration after a great deal of discussion. So we went through that plan, and it doesn't mean that we are the final arbiters of that plan and how, and what the end result is. It only means that, as a committee, that was the plan that we voted to forward to the administration. There will be changes to it, there will be modifications, and those will be done by the administration and council and planning collectively. So the committee did, in fact, vote. You know, we had four members of the public and two council members on that committee. So after a significant deal of discussion, we did vote to forward that plan to the administration. So again, that doesn't mean we're the final arbiters or that we are the ones that dictate what happens. It just means that we did vote to send that plan to the administration.
Thank you, Ms. Grandillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to tag on what Dean said, Ms. McDougal, and I wasn't going to talk about Forest Ridge, but the developer is here. If you'd like to talk to him after, I'm sure he would. He did, once Chagrin River Watershed got involved, they really made sure to protect the wetlands. The developer did work very closely with them and followed their recommendations of making changes. So planning was very comfortable that everything that could be done on this property has been done. So that's why we passed it on to council. Secondly, I was informed probably a week ago of the passing of a longtime Ward 5 resident. Andre Buehler passed away. It was not in the paper. I get it at his request, there was no services. But I wanted to pass that along. Most people in Aurora, I believe, knew Andre, and Andre worked very hard as the homeowners' president. He worked very hard for the, for the city, and I just wanted to pass along my sympathies to his family.
Thank you. Mr. Hattrich?
Thank you, Mr. Horvath. Thank you, Ms. McDougal, for answering the question about the Forest Ridge. I was going to ask the same thing. Just something I, seemingly it's been kind of set back a little bit. So, Mr. Kraus, I'm going to address it to you. The Spring Hill property. We moved the deed house, and that was a great thing. That's come along good, I guess, with the fact that it's still around or not, I don't know. Now, we're looking at the Hartman property. Can you give me an update on what's going on with the Spring Hill property?
Mr. Kraus?
The Chairman of the Councilmen. We currently, the Service Department staff is working on the entry sign, the main park sign. That should be done here within, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks. So we'll install that. We also have some new signs, path signs and stuff that will be installed probably in the next month or so, as the weather starts to continue to get better. And then we'll continue over the course of the summer to kind of work on cleaning up the area and stuff like that. We've protected the area around, or at least kind of sectioned off the area around where the deed house was at this time. But at some point this summer, we'll be working on excavating that or kind of smoothing that area out.
Follow up, please?
Yes.
Okay. Have we added any more paths in the past nine months or year? Walking paths? And, and just one more question, please. And are we still looking at three, the brush and so forth away from the lake where we let people go in there and fish?
Mr. Kraus?
The President to the Councilmen, we've, we've added a few. There's a couple of paths that we would like to continue on. However, we need further investigation and study through the EPA because of proximity to wetlands in some locations. It was determined, we kind of wanted to kind of let it go through sort of a wet season, like the spring, and kind of take a look at that, because the last time they came out, the conditions weren't as favorable to really see how it would be impacted. So we're in the process of trying to set up a meeting now to have them come out and kind of take a look at some of those path locations.
Thank you.
The follow-up again on the lake?